Let's start the meeting. Can you please rise and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Councilmember Jacob Aspide?
Here.
Councilmember Todd? Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jean Bernani?
He's here.
And Mayor Wong?
Here.
Posting of agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, Library, and the Recreation Department. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. A public comment is welcome, members of public may address the city council by completing a public comment card and give it to a city clerk where it's a meeting. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Listen into the state office, the city council may discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. And I reserve the right to place a three-minute limit on duration of comments. Staff may be asked to follow up on such items. New business. Authorization to issue request for proposals for nonprofit organizations to design and fundraise to rebuild the Lacy Park Arbor. Authorization to return donor plaques if requested. And authorization to revive this Lacy Park landscape. Landscape meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager and I are this morning seeking your policy direction on these three Lacy Park items. Not to belabor these, which are self-explanatory on the screen, we are recommending returning the donor plaques if so requested and reviving the volunteer Lacy Park landscape. During last summer's budget and CIP process, the city manager directed me to bring this project action plan back to you as a year-two proposal, which is where we are right now. As you can see, the community would like the old arbor rebuilt with more durable and longer-lasting materials and, if possible, limit the use of city capital funding. Instead of the traditional process, we are recommending an out-of-the-box approach to secure and design and raise construction funds. If you'd like to try, in the next sixty days, we would issue a request for proposals and return at your April regular meeting with the recommendation of a qualified nonprofit who would act as our design consultants. If we receive no proposals, we will return in March with a capital improvement project for your consideration. Alternatively, you can direct the city manager today to start the project, begin design, and include it in next year's capital budget. With either option, construction funding is contingent on an accurate cost estimate. In a format similar to the Lacy Park restroom project, the council will be able to select from material choices to life cycle costs. I'm looking forward either way, as this is a very interesting and unique project that should turn out very beautiful at day's end. To reiterate, these are our recommendations before you tonight, before you today. And as always, if you or any member of the public sees something that needs fixing, please contact us. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
I appreciate the out-of-the-box thinking. I think that's a good clever way to take the next step on this project, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all the effort that's been put into this. And I have a number of questions just for clarification, if you don't mind. I know I had asked this last time around, and I'm wondering if you could take me back to a vague ballpark. If we were to replicate the arbor as it had been, might you give, and I know there's a materials option that could affect this, could you just give some type of a ballpark of what we might expect this to be in cost?
Oh, I love questions like this. I will give you my junior city attorney answer, and it depends. What we experienced with the Lacy Park restroom was that when you start with a number, you try to vacuum to a project, everyone's very dissatisfied with the outcome. And so what we did with the Lacy Park project was start over with what it was that we wanted. We developed a design, we did a very good cost estimate on it, and then from there, council was able to choose from, do you want a twenty-year building, a thirty-year building? Would you like this sort of material, that sort of material? And at the end of the day, you have a matrix of different cost estimates to choose from. Going in that direction, there are no surprises, there are no dashed expectations that, well, the director said it was going to cost this and you're over, or the director said it was going to cost this and it was under. So answering that question is, it depends. That's the outcome of going forward with the design process that we're recommending today.
Thank you. Previously, Dr. Matthew Lynn had offered a multi-year pledge to this project. I have three or four parts to that. Has anyone connected with him recently to see if that gracious offer is still on the table? If so, is it dependent on which design we use? Is there a possibility for more? Any update on that?
I don't have an update on that specifically. Your current staff has not reached out to Dr. Lynn, and so we would do that if we get to go ahead and go forward with either having an outside group do the design or whether we do it in-house.
Sure. And my final question, thank you again, the donor plaques. There's a piece in here about returning if the donor so desires. Do we know at the time if there was any type of agreement or what was signed when people donated to the arbor? And I know we didn't know last year, but do we know now how much those donors gave? And obviously, I'm asking the question with the possible line toward the future.
Sadly, we've not been able to locate those records. It doesn't mean they don't exist, but we've not been able to locate them. So our intent here is, as the council accepted the donations represented by the plaques, it's up to the council to say, yes, return them, we will keep track of who we returned them to, in case they want them to be placed back again in the future with a rebuilt arbor.
About how many do you think we're in possession of?
Oh, we have about 200 pounds' worth, so... That's probably my best estimate. It's a very heavy box, takes two mic crew to move it about. I think there's probably about forty or fifty. We have all of them that were removed at the time.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
Sure, I was interested to see, I was unfortunately outside talking to the chief and the meeting started, so did we discuss the public comments that were submitted, or did you point that out on this matter?
We haven't got the public comment section of this item, so it had not been put yet.
Got it, thank you. And as to questions about the report, thank you very much, Michael Thrum, Dr. Director Thrum, sorry. I haven't had my copy yet, so we'll be sharper in a minute. I did want to explore a couple things in here that I was confused about in the recommendations, because it seemed that the recommendations were all talking or directed to the request for proposal for the nonprofit to take over the fundraising for this entirely. And I'm wondering if that is where your recommendation came from in that regard?
Our recommendation was to spend the least amount of money in the design process. So that's where the notion came up with, there are a lot of creative people that can contribute their time and talent as a volunteer to do that.
Can you stop right there? So you're actually saying a person, a community member, has, you're envisioning will design the rebuild?
I'm envisioning a nonprofit...
An engineer?
A nonprofit organization would take that responsibility. Very similar to, we would hire a design firm to design something, and then they would have experts on their staff that would do different parts of the engineering design. We would be looking for a nonprofit that would take over the leadership and the management of finding the appropriate design, the right materials, doing cost estimates, working with the community, in addition to going out and performing the fundraising activities. Where we saw that there was an unknown amount of staff resources and expense and time was the fundraising component. And so if, and nonprofits are very successful, part of their mission is to fundraise in order to perpetuate their organizational goals. And so combining those two together, it seemed to be a good compromise or a good solution of having the project move forward efficiently with the least amount of city expense. At the end of the day, you're winding up with a design that the community's involved with, you're winding up with a large ceremonial check that says, we've raised this amount of money that will pay for this design. It comes to the city council, the city council says, that's awesome, accept the design, accept the donation, and we go out and build it.
Right, but I guess my concern is, without further information and knowing where the funds were that were previously raised and given by our bronze plaque families, garden clubs, various groups in the area, it's incumbent upon me to represent past donors and who've given already significantly for the maintenance and building of the Rose Arbor that then were surprised by its demolition at the city's direction, past administration, all of us, I guess, accepted, but it's our responsibility to make that right before we go out, in my mind, and ask more people to pay more money to us to rebuild it. And so that's why, I understand, and I think we have incredible generosity by Dr. Lynn in the past, as well as our past bronze plaque families and supporters, but that part of this really makes me uncomfortable, to go to our community first and say, we need you to raise money to rebuild the thing that we took down that you've already given money to do, over and over again. Keep in mind, I did research, and we have an incredible historical society here, and our pergola, it was referred to then, the arbor, and if you would pass that down, and then I meant some for council members here as well as city manager, it was envisioned as part of the original plan. That's an article in 1930 in the San Marino Tribune, or its precursor, that's remarking about the beautiful Rose Arbor and how it was specifically designed and put in place to be the western entrance to the park. And the city acted unilaterally to take that down. So I have a real problem that we're then going back to our residents when they've given money and land time and again for that pergola, now we call it the Rose Arbor, over now coming on ninety years. Soon we're celebrating, we would be celebrating if it was standing, a hundred years. So to me, you lose me at that first one where we need to get the city residents to come forward and take the laboring oar on this. I believe we have incredible generosity from Dr. Lynn, as well as all the groups in town that will step forward and really give money to support the effort. But to ask them to be the ones to do it all, I mean, we are the friends of Lacy Park Rose Arbor, I mean, they've been at this and volunteering nonstop to do these jobs, which is fundraising, I got that. But to also take on the work that the city does, which is design, engineering, and building, I think is a big ask for a community that's been supporting that Rose Arbor for ninety, eighty years at the time, and that the city took down without regard to that.
I know that some of that was common, but to the extent that I can, some of the questions that were embedded in that. The monies that we received from previous donors, to the extent that we're able to track down records, obviously has been challenging, that money alone would not be enough to rebuild the Rose Arbor. So that's regardless of how money, how it's funded, that would be, we need to do something. This is part of the question that's before you today, it is not necessarily our recommendation. You go one way or the other, this is a decision that you have to make. We have heard all of your opinions, and there are some of you who would like to go for outside city funding, some of you who would like to do city funding, so that's really just a decision for you to let us know. The other piece of this that's useful is, fundraising is not typically something that municipal staff people are either trained in or do regularly, and depending on how much money we're talking about, where it's coming from, and how we're doing the fundraising, that can present conflict of interest issues for staff. So part of the brainstorm of offering it this way is that the fundraising piece becomes not a staff function, becomes someone else, it's not, you know, there's no perception of quick growth, oh, there's no potential issues such and that. I suppose it's possible, although we haven't talked about this, I'm sure that it's possible to separate out the fundraising from the design. So in theory, if you wanted to separate out the fundraising, to the extent that you want there to be fundraising, we could offer that to a nonprofit to take on, and then take the design back on ourselves.
And can I also, the other question was though, can, is it possible, so if we could, I know you don't have an answer today, and I appreciate that of the past monies that were given, but my understanding, and so I'm wondering if we could do a little bit more investigation in our finance department, and I don't know, I know that's not Director Throms, but that comes under your auspices, right, for finance, and to research what was the last available, because I think the amount was pretty significant, but we still had. It was rolled into the general funds, but I think that that number is over $100,000.
So we can certainly go back and check again. As you know, we have some resource issues in our finance department at the moment, and they did check originally. And so the answer that we don't have records is because they checked and they weren't able to find anything. We can send them back again. I think neither one of us wants to be definitive, since we don't have a finance up here, we'll need to go back and find that out. But of course, if there's information out there, we're gonna, we're gonna go find it.
Okay, thank you.
And so really, the decision in your hands is, do you want to spend city funds to complement out the rest of the donation money that we received from before? Do you want us to check back with Matthew Lynn, with Dr. Lynn, and report back to you before you make a decision? Do you want to ask the public to do some of the fundraising for it? So those are, that's just some of the direction that we need from you today, and we're open to whatever direction you decide to go.
Thank you. One other one. I don't know if we just want to talk about the Rose pergola arbor, or did you want to talk about the landscape committee?
Those are all up for you to talk about today.
Okay, I did have a question, because I think in the past, my understanding is, having been, had the pleasure to serve with a lot of people in the community on our, as well as city staff, Ron Servin is a member, and you are as too, recently, in the San Marino Garden Club. And again, it's a very old institution, it's been here since 1948, and they've been active in the Lacy Park landscaping since that time. I believe they've had a seat on the landscape committee at that. Since then, basically, the president serves, and I had the pleasure of doing so for a couple years right before your tenure began here. And I know past presidents, I believe some were going to come this morning or wrote in, also had the benefit of serving on the landscape committee. So I would just ask, and I know that there are at least two other very active and supportive garden groups in town that support the Old Mill, as well as other civic projects, and so I would ask that you contact the various garden clubs in town and ask them, the presidents or if they want to import, excuse me, appoint a board member to sit on the Lacy Park landscape committee. I would encourage you, if that's possible, to do so. And I'm wondering, I don't know if you need records for that, if you want to find that or not, but I can get you information that would help about who has served in the past.
That would be excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we still have the original design of the Rose Arbor?
We've not been able to locate it in our files. Fortunately, we have enough photographic evidence that we can duplicate it.
Not in our building department? Do we have that? No. What was it built?
The one that was demolished was built in 2005.
And we don't have a copy of it, or that?
Mr. Mayor, you would be amazed that we don't, well, we don't have copies.
Because we wanted that design that would save us the cost of the design, we just replicate it.
Well, we would be replicating it anyhow, because we would want to be looking at different materials. Materials that were used in 2005 obviously do not last any more than about twenty years, and so we would be looking at what its aesthetics looks like, and then building a system that would be much more durable and longer-lasting. So we can do that from photographic evidence that we have.
I just want to clarify, is there any shortcoming with going with a nonprofit organization? Is that just for the design or also for the building?
The building would be performed through the Public Works Department, we have expertise in that, and I'm not overly comfortable letting a nonprofit also go forth and build a project on city property, and I would suspect that the city attorney would have, would measure a heartburn over that. And then there's also public contract code issues with having a nonprofit do that. So it's just cleaner for the city to accept the design, accept a bag of money, and for us to go out and do it. The design can be done equally, either inside or with a nonprofit, using a nonprofit requires no additional expense by the city. If it was done in-house, there would be some small measure of structural review that I would have to have performed on that, so that Director Servantes would issue you a building permit. And then, of course, fundraising, as Dr. Marlowe said, we would have to become educated and proficient, and then use a lot of time to go out and fundraise, which would take away those resources or have to add resources to the operational costs that we have. If you did it outside, then our role would be overseeing it, just like we would be monitoring and consulting doing anything else.
Okay, back to the design again. So who was it that designed 2005?
It wasn't 2005, it's 2005. It's older than that. I believe there was a fundraising, if I was going to correct this, it was a fundraising campaign for the maintenance, which was in 2005 and 2006, or around that, in the early 2000s, but it was actually built in the 90s, the structure that was taken down, it's mind-seeing, and I'm sure there are members of the audience who can have intimate details of the steps of the most recent, and dates and times, but it's older than 2005.
Councilwoman Xavier came up with the $100,000 from the 2005 maintenance?
Yes, there was $117,000 at the time, I believe, and there may be additional funds, but in my understanding is, there's close to $120,000 that was raised during a campaign in the early 2000s, and that was for the maintenance and ongoing upkeep repair, et cetera, of the Rose Arbor.
Great, thanks. Can we also go out and find who designed it back in the 90s?
We can look for that information, yeah.
Yeah, and see if we can obtain a copy, probably can save us some money.
Well, yes, we'll see what we can do. It may or may not save us any money. Work that was done in 1990s may not look even better, so we'd still have to redo the work. Sometimes it's just easier starting from a blank piece of paper than it is trying to renovate the existing restroom and try and make it into something else.
Any question? Any more? Yeah, I can open it to public comment. We have some written documents for public comments, and we have already got copies of that. So now I'm gonna start with the first one, Ms. Ming-Tang.
Good morning, city councilwoman and man and fellow citizens. I live on 1240 Hathaway, and we have another house on Windsor. So before we even moved here, about ten years ago, the first time I came to San Marino, I visited the Lacy Park, it was a weekend, and we paid the entrance, because we'd heard so much about Lacy Park, and I was very impressed with the Rose Arbor. I loved it, but I wish we have a lake. Still, that was one of the things I still remember from the early days. And even when I convinced my parents to move here, we say, yeah, you will enjoy Lacy Park so much, you can walk there every day, you will live longer. So this is really dear and dear to my heart. And this morning, I was on my way to tennis, much-needed exercise, but I come here, because I know everyone comes here to speak, there are probably hundreds of people not able to come to speak, and I feel the obligation to raise my voice. So I heard that we have good ideas, that we can raise money for design, for, to build the arbor, but I didn't hear any concrete, who we are going to ask for the design, and who will get the money, and how long, there's no scope. And I know we've always been doing the fundraising for various things in the city, but this is one of the things that's so important, it's like the face of our city, and we cannot totally rely on residents' generosity, even though that's incredible, and we always appreciate, but we cannot burden them on this. So I would recommend, even we can, we can still go with asking for money, but we can use it for other projects, like to beautify the medium or other projects, but for this particularly important things to improve, I would highly, highly suggest we use city funds, because this is our priority. You can look at other things, and we can prioritize, but I would think this is one of the top priorities. We want to do it, and we want to do it quickly and do it beautifully, not the most cheapest way, but maybe most efficient way. And I love the idea, we try to look forward, the past the design, and we definitely could possibly save some money. And I still have my plan from my previous owner, to build a house, they have some plan, but I don't know why our city don't have that. So I wish we can find it and save some money, but I highly encourage us to do it in a quick manner and do it beautifully, and we will all support. I'm part of the garden club, and I know how much we want to help, but the garden club resources is so limited, it's just the membership, so we cannot rely on garden club or other nonprofit. So I would say we do it with the city fund. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Next, Ms. Jordy Shigal.
Good morning, Mayor and councilmembers. Vice Mayor, thank you so much. I had requested a little more than three minutes, because I feel like I'm representing several people, and also I have a lot to share with you. I have some, I got a call this morning from Mrs. Plunkett, who is one of our bronze plaque donor families, and she definitely wants the Rose Arbor rebuilt as a replica, and she asked me to pass that to you. I have a few posters that I designed to share with you that will give you some information. This is the list, this is a documentation of our bronze plaques, all of them, that my husband and I photographed in December of 2015, and my heading says, "San Marino Lacy Parks Bronze Plaque Families and Community Organizations Pledge Support for Our Historic Arbor's Upkeep."
Ms. Shigals, when do we believe the date of those to be?
There were two or three waves of... There were two or three waves of fundraising. And the fundraising, this is the situation, we really don't have to reinvent the wheel. Because what happened was, is the city of San Marino created the San Marino Charitable Foundation. And that was a way for the city to receive funds that would be tax deductible for the community's project. And so, I believe that it should not be just in the hands of a nonprofit, or the city, but it should be a collaboration between the only nonprofit that should be involved directly, in my opinion, is the San Marino Charitable Foundation, which I believe should be, to be brought back to active. I have the original, the original, what do you call it? The bylaws and the amended ones from 2010. This is one thing I'd like to share with you, and I made a copy for all of you. It's the "Save the Rose Arbor" clipping from the Tribune, 1993. And one thing I'd like to point out is that the $1,000 donations to sponsor a post, a column, would be placed in a trust, in a city trust fund, to perpetuate the care of the Rose Arbor, all tax deductible. And it was a promise that we need to restore the city's trust, the public trust, and we need to rebuild this beautiful Rose Arbor. These are some beautiful photographs of the Rose Arbor. And up until recently, as recently as 2015, we had professional photographers, wedding photographers, coming and photographing. It was not a tear-down, and it was demolition by neglect campaign. And it's very upsetting to so many people who love Lacy Park and this community.
Showing, sorry, is there a copy of the handout for the right?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Basically, I was there, and there was an article in the Tribune, and earlier in the year, our previous council mayor was there. And you can see by the photographs that we weren't wearing hard hats, okay? There was nothing really dangerous at the time. And I believe, and I don't, and I also question the idea of a ghost at Stoneman, but that's another subject. Anyway, I've spoken with Stephen Ormeny, who was responsible for our Lacy Park Rose Garden being an award-winning garden as recently as 2005. And San Marino Heritage is willing, with the monies that we raised from our sales of our San Marino Heritage beautiful rose, and I hope everyone has one in their garden, we will help pay for Stephen Ormeny's time to help in this project, should the city be open to that. When we met in September, I met with Gretchen and Michael Throne and Stephen Ormeny and Dan Ryan from Historic Resources Preservation Group, that has done some consultation work for us. We met and we, oh, we're at Lacy Park, and I think Ken and we will appreciate this. We talked about the footings that were left behind, and apparently, they were going to be, you know, Mr. Throne had mentioned that they were concerned that these were a trip hazard, and they were going to be removed. But the value of those footings that are concrete, and according to Gary Barnes, who's here and going to speak again, I mean, not again, but Gary Barnes is here, and he has a gazebo company, and he would like to talk to you about some materials. So, I invited him to join us this morning, and I want to publicly thank him for coming two hours on the freeway to come here and be with us. Now, he's one of many contractors who could get involved. But I think I'm getting a little rambling here, so I'm just going to maybe turn it over to him, if that's okay? And I might just add just a few more things.
Can you ask for a good row?
And I have, I also have, this is another poster that everybody can see. And it does show that there was rotting from some of the posts. But I believe there was a lot of value in what was salvaged, and we don't know what happened to that material, because some of these posts were perfectly fine. And I also have just one last design here. This could be used for supplementing the city materials, the city funds that were diverted from the Rose Arbor Fund to the general fund, which was not kosher. And we really need that money back for this rebuild. But we can supplement that with fundraising, and I'm willing with San Marino Heritage to donate 20 San Marino Heritage roses for it. And we also received word from Star Roses, which was the company who developed and analyzed the hybridized rose that became San Marino Heritage. They have offered 200 roses for our Lacy Park Rose Garden. So, and except for the freight, which San Marino Heritage will pay for. This is the design I have.
Where is she going?
She just took something out of City Roses, I think.
This was a World War I poster for raising money, and it used to have soldiers in the back. But we changed it, and now we have our Arbor in the back.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's it? Wow, I gave you 10 minutes.
She's preserving time.
All right, next, Mr. Patterson.
Good morning, Mayor and everybody. Good morning, good morning. I'm a little scared following Shirley, because I might take a little bit different tack to it. But I think sending us out to volunteer groups would be outstanding idea. I think that there's a good chance that the Huntington Gardens or the Descanso Gardens might do it separately, or maybe even jointly, to do something like this. Now, when you think about it, what two organizations have more involved in that? And those two, I mean, just fantastic. And Julie, the president of the Descanso Gardens, has lived in San Marino all her life, including today. So, they used to be our neighbors right next door. So, I think we should take a look at that, and I think that maybe between those two organizations, they might be able to really do something great, and they're certainly good at raising funds. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Well, why don't we come up, I'm sorry, just this one, but you, please come up.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and citizens.
Good morning.
I've been here for 45 years, and I've been watching this beautiful park go up, go down, go up and go down in the summers. My husband was a landscape architect, and so I got a brilliant idea the other night, and I went back into the garage, into an old flat cabinet, and sure enough, there were all the minutes of everything that's been going on. All started with the Lacy Park Committee, and it was formed with the Garden Club and a few others. And my husband served on the committee, and they did a beautiful job. And then, all of a sudden, the Rose Arbor came up. And from that City Beautification Committee, the Lacy Park Committee was formed. Now, it's very interesting to say that when it was formed, this is what I found in the minutes. Sorry.
You're going to be two arms.
On November 27th, in the office of the Park Superintendent for the City Beautification Committee, Mr. Alderson, who was the director of Parks and Public Works at the time, reported that the funds in trust were used to pay the landscape architect and then installation of the irrigation systems, and the planting of the roses was paid for with allocated city funds. So, that's how it all got started. It's interesting to see what then transpired. And it was back when my husband came on this other board, that the Lacy Park Landscape Committee, they started working on this completely, and working it's little by little. But my husband, who was a landscape architect, got, that was his good friend, Ron. I can write this all down, there's certain bids for you, that they used.
Is this for the restoration, Mrs. Hoffman?
Yes.
In the 80s?
Yes.
Yeah, I had spoken to Smoke earlier, I was 86, right?
203, it was really a big family. And at this time, Ron Servin was the head of the park. And final touch-ups were made, and plans underway for the rededication to be developed on May 23rd. So, they already had a date projected to do this. What's interesting is, my husband at the time said, "You know, there's a few things that we can do to cut costs." And he says, "We have a beautiful Rose Arbor up at, you know, at the Huntington Library." And he suggested that we go up with him, and they also put on a committee, Jim Folsom. And together, the two of them, along with the committee, they went and looked at what they did for their Arbor, and then we did a, really, a replica, as the waitress will show this. Okay, so they then got on this committee, and they started it, and by May 23rd, the dedication took place.
What year was that?
2003, in May 5th, 2003, okay. I think when you're talking about getting all this help, the design is right in our back door at Huntington Library. And I met with Mr. Ron Carruth, who did this very simply, up there, saved money for the library. And it can be done so easily, and I think people are making a big deal out of this thing. They used, which we want to do, wood, colors, covered, and it looked like steel, painted, no rot, then could come into place, that happened on the first floor. So, therefore, I think I really approve if we would go with this up there, with there, and have them come and help us design, actually, it's the same design that's up there. So, any of you go and look at it, it's beautiful, and they did it so easily. Of course, they had help from that, but we would have, originally have to pay, I guess, you know, the work that has to do with irrigation. I think the irrigation system is in there, but it has to be replaced. So, my suggestion is to please use Mr. Carruth up there at Huntington Library. And he's the big curator of the rose collection, and is now famous up there. And people come to him day by day, and those people who were volunteers can see it. So, I suggest if you want to see something that we can do, go up there and look, and please put them in as our advisors.
That's great, thank you.
And for the record, his name is Tom Carruth?
I just.
C-A-R-R-U-T-H.
Right, correct.
Next, we have Mr. Gary Barnes. Just come up, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Gary Barnes, and I own Calveron Redwood Gazebo's. And although I completely believe that redwood would be a beautiful patio, I have a suggestion of a more permanent product, it's called a lumah wood. We can replicate the design identically, and it never needs painting, and it actually has a lifetime warranty on it. And as far as the post, we would use a fiber cement, which would replicate like a 12-to-12 pillar. So, it would never require painting ever again, and it never needs to, you know, worry about rust or rot. And I have pictures of how they would look, but we can match the design identically. That's all I have to say, any questions about the product?
No, any question? Very good, thank you. Okay, any more public comments? Yes, please come up.
I'm Chris Delacmon at 2340 Coniston Place. I just want to echo what some others have said regarding the design of the Arbor. We keep bringing up finding someone to design it, when I think the design has already been made, and I would like to see it replicated as close to the original as possible. The design was done in the late 20s, 1930, and it was designed by one of our founding fathers, not one of the first city council members, but somewhat early on, William Hurj- Hurj- Hurj. And he was the supervisor of the state of Henry Huntington, and later served on the city council. He is kind of one of the fathers of Lacy Park and the plantings throughout the park and the mediums and the Arbor. And that was all part of what made San Marino special and unique. And changing the design would not really be in the best interest of the city and everyone to live here, and the future of the city. And the Arbor at Huntington Library was closely connected to the Arbor at the park. So, continuing that, like Mrs. Hoffman was stating, would be, make perfect sense, and I think would be good for the city. And secondly, I sense the takedown of the Arbor was done for the city workers. I too wonder where is all the wood, what happened to the wood? And I think that it would be better for the city to use the city funds to put it back up, since so many donors had given so much time and money and commitment to having, just preserving that the way it was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rude?
Yes.
Public comments concluded, only have concluded, I just wanted to.
Hold on, I guess, any more public comment? Public comment session is closed. You want to make a comment?
I do know if there was another person who wanted to still speak.
Any more, do we have any more? Any more public comment?
Nope.
No, no more? Well, it's called. It's closed. Please, City Manager.
It's always great when the public comes out when there's so much. It's very much no problem, this one I can probably do in three minutes. It's always great when the community comes out when there's so much passion around this project. And I just want to be clear, the question isn't really whether it's going to be rebuilt. The general consensus of the council seems to clearly be to move forward and rebuild, so that's the direction we're headed in. The questions that really are on the table today are big picture questions. So, question one is, do you want to have the city put forth the funds to do it, or would you like to rely more heavily on due donations? That's one question, we just need an answer to that one today. Either way you decide, of course, this is a common. If you do decide you want to have outside funds, then the question becomes, who do you want to do that fundraising? Thanks for these documents, for Shirley, we've never seen these before. So, and there's some. So, and there's some cleanup that would need to happen. The last time this was established in 2010, just for the degree, we need to fix some things, but I'll have a conversation with the city attorney and see what we really have here in terms of the charitable foundation. That doesn't change the fact that you could still ask us to go out and get a nonprofit to coordinate those donations. And just to be clear, we're not asking that nonprofits do the donating, we're suggesting that a nonprofit coordinate the fundraising campaign. So, that's a question for you today. And then the issue about the design, and I don't want to go too far down this path and say it's not my area, but you're in deep, but the issue with the design is not a question about what should it look like. It's not the aesthetic design, it's literally the plan documents that we're talking about that require building permits and so forth. So, there's no question about, oh no, what will it look like? Let's get an outside group to tell us what it looks like. We know what it will look like, as everybody has said here today, but we will still need to go out and get new design documents. And that's the distinction of, I think, what Michael is talking about. So, really, the questions for us are, do you want to move forward city funded? Do you want to try to move forward with getting new donations as well to supplement what we had before? And if so, who would you like to have coordinate that? And who would you like to coordinate the design documents themselves? I just wanted to frame that, and obviously, it's your discussion.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna open up for comments, also any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to also thank all of those who took public comment. I'd love to make two observations first. I've really felt, to this point, uncomfortable about making decisions with the Rose Arbor, because there's so much we didn't know. So, I'd like to give a really special thank you to Mrs. Jagels and Mrs. Hoffman for filling in some of our blanks. With that, it leaves me disturbed. None of us at the table here own any of this, so I want to make clear that I'm not going that way, but we had multiple, multiple mess-ups in the history with this. And I think it is crucial that in going forward, we, first of all, gather all the historical information that we can, and that we be extremely methodical in doing this, and also take a good look at lessons learned. I do feel, if that is indeed true, that there were over $100,000 in funds that were placed in hold, that we research that, and when we are able to locate that money, that that be reallocated. Remember, we have been working on something where we had no dollar amounts. When I asked previously, how much did people donate? I didn't know if these were $10, $50, $1,000, even going back, it's a pretty significant amount. So, first of all, that was very helpful today to hear that. Then, for Mrs. Jagels to have a copy of, I believe it was the agreement of some type, that is helpful to see what the terms and conditions were. And it is a complex project in that we have the building, we have to look at future maintenance, that's an extremely generous offer of the donation of the roses, we need to look at irrigation, we need to look at the trellising. It's quite a complex project that we're looking at. So, again, I want to emphasize, for me, it's crucial that we move forward in a methodical way, so we don't have, and I'm going to use this word freely, disaster that we had in the past. We should not have had something in 2005 that just sort of ruined itself without proper follow-up. So, I would really like this to be a careful project that is well documented, maintained, that there's specific ownership within the city as we go forward with it. Yes, I would like us to reconfirm with Dr. Lynn where he is at with the future donation. We need to see what was poorly done with the previous design. As I said, there's something that could be done better. I am very much in favor, as Mr. Pedersen mentioned, first approaching preferably the Huntington Library. I think we received their expertise in the first go-around, even though it wasn't used. We've had a delightful partnership with their experts over there, and I would hope and believe that we could go forward with that, and taking a look at the materials. So, what I'm going to say in conclusion, I'm somewhat begging the question of what we are charged to do today. I'd like us to slow down. I'd like us first to officially collect all materials, all information that we have, so that we can reconstruct both the past, what we've done well, where we failed. I'd like to find out about that money that is sitting in escrow somewhere within the city. I'd like us to find out the exact amount. And for starters, I'd like us to see if we might be able to have a sit-down with the folks at the Huntington, look at what they would see both in design, if we were to replicate in the scope of the project. At that point, I'd like to come back to council and talk about the financial part and how that would go, but I think we just need to do some cleanup. We are coming from something that was a big letdown. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lee?
Yeah, this is one where I agree slowly now, but I want to do the right thing and be respectful of the donations that were made in the past. Today, I know it was the discussion was very conversational, and we really didn't have all the facts and the timelines down, and there were some good facts that were surfaced today. So, I think we should take the time to go back historically and see what the timeline looked like for the development of the arbor, what commitments were made to those people that gave the $117,000, how much of that was spent, how much of it was not spent. This is a big financial decision, because if I recall before, this is roughly a $300,000 project or something, so we should understand that. And, you know, again, personally, I'm very intrigued by, you know, the use of a nonprofit in this, but I want to understand what the commitments were made before, before I approach that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I guess I differ from my colleagues in respect that I believe we should proceed with the design immediately. I think that the fundraising is definitely something that could be run by a nonprofit. I appreciate Ms. Jagel's suggestions and information about the past. I will say, there used to be, I'm looking at documents here going back, well, obviously to 1930s, which is what I ended up, but in the 80s, this was done through the Community Chest, which was then probably rolled into that organization that used to be kind of commonplace for cities to do fundraising for projects. And outgrowth of that, before our centennial, was the San Marino charitable organization, which raised money for various projects. So, if that's something that the city attorney can help us renew, and we have an interest in the community to then serve on that and fundraise through that, I think that would be a great way to contact Dr. Lynn and other organizations in town, and as well as individuals that might want to step up and actually contribute toward the rebuilding. But I am anxious personally, because I think it's been down now a couple years, and this is something, again, as the first person to the last comments, as well as I think about a dozen that we received online, there's not a person who's spoken against rebuilding it. And I think the $10,000 to $20,000 that it would take, and maybe less, which I appreciate Mr. Pedersen and Mrs. Hoffman coming forward with the suggestions about Huntington, and Tom Carruth and Jim Folsom are both friends of mine, as well as Julianne Rook, who is the director at the Descanso. So, these are great people. I would love it if they could get involved, but I know that those organizations aren't going to rebuild it for us, because they have big projects of their own, like the centennial celebration of the Huntington this year. So, we might get their expertise and recommendations to help us with the plans, but we really, I know because it's a city, it needs to be engineered to specific structure, and I don't think that's what their services we could expect from them. So, I would like our city to go ahead, consult with them first, as far as we need for any designs, but we have posts in place. And I'm anxious to get at least the design started and engineered, and fundraising can go on simultaneously as we go forward in that. So, I support bringing back whatever, a nonprofit, perhaps that San Marino charitable organization. We could try to kick that off and get community involved with that to raise the funds, but I think it is the city's mistake to have taken it down after 80 years of, I mean, fundraising efforts by residents and commitments of time and money and resources, and I think that's an embarrassment, and it should be put back up and designed as soon as possible. So, I'm in it completely, and I think it's probably a split among four of us here today as to how to proceed.
Mr. Mayor, I am not concerned about the $10,000 to $20,000 to get, you know, the specs, so we need quotes on what it would be to rebuild. I am concerned about, you know, the cost of 300 to go actually build it. You know, and in terms of my comments about getting all the facts first in the timeline, I would think knowing what the parameters are for rebuilding it is one of those key facts. And I would not want to give a nonprofit launch to go design whatever they wanted, because that might double the cost of it. So, again, I'm not concerned about moving forward to get a replacement designed, so we know what we're bidding for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I concur with all my colleagues. I'm sorry. Personally, I would like to see the project moving forward ASAP, because it's been three years, and I'm very sorry that it was taken down by our city, and I apologize for that. And I also don't want to return the plaques to the donors, because I would like to see those plaques back on one day, so that we can remember who paid for all these. And I think that we should go ahead and have a committee, and have this committee involved, and, you know, so and go with the design and the material, and have a meeting with Mr. Carruth and so on. Do I have a motion or...
I don't know what the motion is.
That's just okay.
I'd like to offer a motion. I'd like to make the motion that staff connect with the Huntington Library and the Descanso Gardens to see if they would work with our Park and Public Works Director to offer an initial analysis of whether they would be willing to work on the design. If they decided to do so, we would then put forth a design committee for the integrity of the design. I would like to ask that staff be directed to reconnect with Dr. Lynn to re-acertain his commitment to this project and to what amount. I would like to request that we gather all historical and financial information as was presented today, for the purpose of going forward, but also to refund, put into funding the financial, the dollar amount that was forgotten, that is in our city coffers.
For a re-characterization of that motion? Please do. Wish me luck. Okay.
Let me do it in three separate things, because I'm not sure all of us...
Why don't we do that in three separate measures as it was brought out?
Let me be sure I know what they are.
Okay.
Okay, so, what I heard was essentially a motion to direct staff to work with the Huntington Library and Descanso Gardens on their potential interest in going forward, to reach out to Dr. Lynn on potential future donation, and to bring back to the council a thorough assessment of the historical and financial information. Yes. So, okay, so that's your motion, so you may or may not have a second.
Do I have a second?
Do we even need to make, do we even need to make that a motion? Because that's just go do your over and come back.
Normally, I would say no, but if you don't all agree, that's a problem for staff. So, if you all just decided that that was direction, and at least three of you agree with that direction, then I don't think we need that in the form of a motion. But to the extent that you may not all agree, a motion will be helpful to know.
I would agree with that with direction, about going and getting, you know, again, the facts and the timelines, we're looking at data here, not conversational. And I would think isn't a motion more around spending money?
Or taking action. But if the mayor and the vice mayor don't support this direction, or would like to go in a different way, then a vote clarifies that.
Can you repeat the motion?
No. Okay.
She hasn't had her coffee.
I know.
I know, I only had a little bit of coffee. A motion to direct staff to work with the Huntington Library and Descanso Gardens to assess their interest in working with us in the future on this project, to reach out to Dr. Lynn to assess his interest in continued donation, and to return to the council with thorough historical and financial information before moving forward. Thank you.
I would second that. Can I add something to that? Can we also form a committee with that?
My original thought was, in keeping it clean, to just have a real down and dirty, simple report back, and then, as soon as we have that info, absolutely, the committee going forward. Because what I'm thinking at this point, it felt like two members present this morning in particular gave us our first detailed historical piece. Let's get that into a nice compendium, then to give the committee specific direction once we have those first initial pieces back. But that's simply what I was thinking.
The concern I have is that if we wait for the staff to come back this evening, it might be another six months.
No.
So, we need to...
Day on it.
Day on it.
Mr. Mayor, I would think that the next motion we might be considering would be authorizing, you know, the $10,000 to $20,000 to get the design ready, to get quotes going, and that can be a parallel path.
Also, we have a motion on the floor.
I second it.
She said... Yes, let's have a vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember J. Kowalski.
May I amend my own motion with a break to perhaps honor what the mayor is requesting?
Yes.
May I ask staff what they feel would be a reasonable amount, the quickest time possible, since this is not very complex at this point, to be able to come back to us?
I don't know that it's not very complex, but is Friday, March workable? It's supposed to be the Friday meeting in March. I'm sorry. Is it doable in February? No, March. That would be our suggestion. Friday, March.
I have another question. Councilwoman Lee, do you want to add that?
I would agree to add a deadline.
Deadline end in not of 2030, don't know, design.
I'm gonna do that separately.
Okay, great. All right, okay. Roll call, please.
For the clarification, what was the date on the motion?
The Friday, March meeting.
That's two months.
Yes. Councilmember Kowalski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yes.
Does the mayor check around me?
No.
And mayor won?
Yes.
That's a stat, you might have another motion coming?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lee?
I would move to authorize up to $20,000 for the, Michael, is it the engineering?
Yes.
For the engineering of a replacement of the old rose arbor.
I'm sorry, I need to ask a procedural question. City Attorney?
Yes.
I don't believe the council needs to authorize $20,000. I can authorize $20,000, is that correct? It's really the council, the issue with the council is there's no money available to do it, right? That's the issue, they need to appropriate the money?
It would be a budget appropriation, it's not otherwise available in the budget, yes. Because that is within your contract authority, they give the direction, and you go ahead with that. The question is, is what about the money?
Okay, so I might offer, amend, to offer a different motion, that would be to appropriate up to $20,000 to complete the design for the Rose Arbor and authorize the city manager to move forward.
And establish a project account.
And establish a project account for this purpose in capital improvement.
Yes, utilizing funds from the capital improvement fund reserves, in the amount of $20,000 for this project, and authorize the finance department to make such a transfer. What can I do, my dear finance director? I move what they said.
Right. And I'll second that.
I have a question. I just want to clarify, in appropriating the $20,000, is that with the understanding this would be after the meeting, if there is the agreement from either, and hopefully Huntington and... Huntington and/or Descanso, to replicate the original, and that is what you are proposing, that amount for, and are we in concurrence that that's what we want?
I would just say from a technical perspective, before Councilmember Yudi decides if that's what he wants, is if the idea is to have these working on parallel tracks, then this would not wait for that. So we would be having a dialogue, but again, we need design documents, no matter what the Huntington says.
I appreciate that, but I think the point of clarification I need is what would the design documents be and then I'm fine to vote once I understand.
I see, it would be essentially rebuilding of what we had with more durable materials.
Yes, plans and specifications suitable for public contract bidding. That's what, that's what those funds would be assigned to do, up to $20,000 ceiling.
Exactly as was.
Exactly as was.
Thank you.
Yes. Same designs, best we can replicate it, using more durable materials. And when it comes back to the council at that point in time when that activity is done, you'll have the ability to make a menu selection depending on what the cost estimates work out. So we would also include the cost estimate.
And also I would suggest that that time we can also give the recommendations, should we get them from the personnel at the Huntington who we're able to consult with as well as for materials that they've had experience with and their durability, but to not hold up the design and engineering, you know, not put the cart before the horse, so to speak. They are a great resource, probably in the end result. And, and you mentioned Descanso, I don't know if you did, I think you did, Descanso as well, or the resident did. So could they be consulted also on materials choice?
They would be, in my way of performing this, I would consult with them first because that actually charts your direction as to what sort of materials should you consider. They have the expertise, when I met with Jim Bolson last year, they have a dozen different sorts of arbers going on over there and he had, we spent about five hours going through each one, which was exciting for me, maybe painful for everyone else, but really in the nuts and bolts of which ones perform better over time. And so reestablishing that communication, just checking back in with them and then going to Descanso, which they also have many, many things over there too. And doing that, that's your first step before you start putting into it.
So, Mr. Mayor, you have to think a motion, but you haven't seconded it yet.
Do I have a second?
I seconded. Oh, you didn't, I'm sorry, I actually wrote it down.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jacobowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Yudi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shepard Rami?
Yes.
And Mayor Wong?
Yes. All right. Any more motion?
You still have two more areas that we'd like to hear policy direction on. One is returning plaques and the other is reviving the landscape committee.
And just to point to procedure, if you all are generally unified on this, we can just take direction from you, it doesn't need to be an official motion. The question is, do you want us to return the plaques to the donor campus if they requested or keep it to put on? And are you comfortable with us moving ahead to revive the Lacy Park?
Can I ask questions about that because we haven't discussed the plaque specifically? My understanding, and perhaps this is prior, I don't know, surely still here.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, you're moving. I know that in the past, I don't know if she wants to comment on this because I believe there have been donor families that have contacted her and I think as well, some are in the process of requesting theirs back. And I certainly, especially that they were taken down by us in the way and manner that it was done prior, that I apologize to those families and I think we should do whatever is their request. But I wanted to also hear the number that, and the circumstances if we could, because we didn't have discussion on the bronze plaque issue at all. And that's, if we need to, if we're going to act on that, I think we do need to hear public comments about that.
Do you want to address that first or?
I don't know, people have reached out to you.
Yes, people have reached out to us and we've asked them to just have a little patience so that we can bring this matter to you, for you to provide us with direction, whichever way. If we return them, we will keep track of them and if we retain them, we keep track of them. So it's really more of, is your direction, if people request it, that we return them to you.
Can I ask you, I know that you mentioned before about the weight of the bronze plaques, that they're very significant and it takes a lot of work, but can an inventory be made listing all of the last names of what you have, is that, or do we need to request or direct that we get an inventory made so we know what we have in our possession at this time and then we can move forward?
We have an inventory already.
But you don't know as you sit here what that.
I don't have that number characterized in my head, but I know that we have an.
There is already.
There is a list, we have, as of last year, a very updated list as to how to get in contact with all of the families or the donors. So we can very easily reach out to them and ask if they want that or just as they come forward, return them if they so request. And keep track that we, we no longer have it in our possession because we don't want to lose track of if they need to go back and want to make sure that we know, there's a chain of custody of them currently holding on to them. If we return them, we'll want to know that and keep track of that.
Correct. Can you have that information available for the city council though, so we're aware of the number of families and who they are in connection with the next time this comes before us? Because I do think that's relevant to our considerations, since many of us will know the families and also might have been contacted by them directly, as well as the Lacy Park and the San Marino Heritage Committee and Friends of Lacy Park Rose Garden. And I know that there's a lot of different connection points as well as city staff. Thank you.
Have we returned any of them?
No, we have not.
Okay, great, thanks.
Regarding the return of the plaques.
I think we have.
Have we?
Not during my tenure, so if they were returned, they were returned before.
Before last year.
Before August 27th.
Regarding the return of the plaques, if we could put that on hold for just a bit, I know when we do contact the donors, we will ask them what their wishes are, but if we put it on hold until we get these items in order, perhaps we could make them feel good about the future, we can excite them about keeping their plaques with us. At this point today, I don't think we have that excitement. And I think it would be a good thing to let them know that, you know, we have returned the money where it needs to be. I'd like to be able to write a really upbeat, positive letter rather than do something now where we're really not at that point.
All right, well, can we open the public comments? Yes, please come up with you. Just keep it for about three minutes.
I think it is important to, to keep these bronze plaques together, although I do respect people who would like them back. I just think they, there was a letter that was written by the city on letterhead after the demolition and I have a copy of that, but apparently it had, it has no signature and it has no date. And it's really an embarrassment that, and I'm concerned about the records being lost and if we could keep these bronze plaques together and assure the community that we are eager to get started, I think it would be really wonderful. And I do apologize, I'm going to give Dr. Marlowe this, this proposal, that's not necessarily formatted right now the way the city would require it as an RFP, but it is a proposal from Gary Barnes and it does include the engineering drawings. And I think it's, I don't know much about proposals, but I'm sure that it's something that I think you should consider because with the monies that are already in the, in the fund, the 117,000 that was diverted, the majority, this would cover, the majority of, of the cost of this would be covered by the money already in it. So I'm going to give this to you and you'll all have copies.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comments? No, I have my closing public comment session. Now, discussion?
Well, discussion, the way it's read is, you know, return the plaques. And I would say no, don't return the plaques if somebody wants their plaque back, sure. But I, I think it's premature because we don't know what, what's really going to happen.
And I was going to add, I think the greatest respect should be paid, paid to those bronze donor plaque families and I would like to ask for the city to write a letter informing them that we are keeping the plaques, but that we are concerned and are working toward a rebuild because I think that's the consensus. Now, there's a lot of details as to funding it, I understand, but I would like to see something go out to those families as I believe, I understood Director Thron from saying, we have a pretty accurate list of the addresses for most of them. And I think that since it has been a significant amount of time, that would be a gesture that would be appreciated by the community. So in the interim that this is going to go forward and we respect their wishes and we have them in our possession in safekeeping because I think that there's a lot of information out there in the community that was unsure about that.
So Councilwoman.
Do you have a question?
I had a question for Councilwoman. Are you saying this is a sort of a sit tight letter?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, now neither I don't want to return the plaques, if we had returned any of them, I would ask them to, you know, bring them, you know, return them back to the city and we would make sure that if you put them back on, if possible. All right, so do I have a motion?
You don't necessarily need a motion if I get four heads nod, head nods to this. I'm understanding, general consensus for the direction is that we don't return any of the plaques for now, we try to get back any plaques that may have been given back in the past and we generate a letter to let them know to sit tight and be excited.
Yes.
That's general.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next one?
So the next one is the Lacy Park.
Yeah, that's getting to Yudi. Councilmember Yudi. Well, I'll come back to you later. Vice Mayor?
I would like to see this revived as we kind of discussed before. I think it's necessary and especially given that we, the community is invested along with various groups in the community that have representation on the past landscape committee and as well as what Mrs. Holland brought forward, that there are, you know, people in town as well who have given their time and service on that committee who are involved in the industry. I think it could be a good way to also involve people in this project and other future beautification projects. And the medians are in issue still, so I would hope that it would be both for Lacy Park and we could broaden it to include our medians, all of our parklands, let's put it that way, because there are issues that affect all of that. And I'm aware from one of the readings that didn't make it here but was sent to the city that even cell tower or the cell issues are coming in and medians and parkways might be part of that where they're trying to, there might be because of the FCC ruling on January 14th, they might even be putting access in those cell towers within the park or the small ones. So I think those are committee concerns that affect all of our parklands.
So Richard, come on, see.
Thank you. I like the idea of reviving the Lacy Park Landscape Committee with the first initial charge of working together with the city because I think this group has excellent historical information to make sure that the document that we receive at the March meeting is as comprehensive as possible. There may be even more information that we heard today, I know presenters try to limit their time, but I cannot tell you how beneficial I find this historical information to be. So I would be extremely appreciative if that could be their first focus along with, including, and as I understand from Mrs. Jagles, that first donation of a significant number of roses and, and to, again, build the excitement of where we're at. I would really be appreciative if we could get that, you know, focus on the Arbor for a starting point. Thank you.
Well, I agree that we should have that committee ASAP. So you have a direction, I don't think you need a motion. And do we need two council members to be on the committee as a liaison or?
So there's a landscape committee that is only liaisonist already and congratulations, you are the alternate and Vice Mayor Shepard Rami is the president.
I was going to volunteer.
Thank you all.
All right.
Great times, Angela.
I guess I have to quit my other job. All right, so.
Thank you so much, Council.
Thank you, thank you. So, I don't know, Vice Mayor, did you hear that?
I was speaking with City Attorney about the issue of the FCC ruling.
Sorry, we have the landscaping committee and you and I, you are the liaison and I'm the alternate.
Thank you very much.
All right. So now let's move on to the next, is the, what's the next one?
The police.
End of your crime update. Has it already ended?
Your mayor is on my side, please.
Reporting, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Good morning.
This is a, a good report.
It's a great report.
Thank you very much. And first of all, I want to really thank the community and I want to thank the officers on the department for the tremendous work and partnerships that resulted in these numbers. The results from everyone from just calling us to the people giving us more information, working with us, victims working with us and then the outstanding work, the officers in the field and the follow-up by the detectives has been very beneficial in the results that we have this year. So I'll move along briefly. For 2018, crime reduction is 32.74 for residential burglaries. Our commercial burglaries is 33% below 2017 numbers. Attempted burglaries were down and even larcenies at 7.69, which was a result of 10 less. And we're working on a plan to focus on larcenies. The majority of those larcenies were all, well, I shouldn't say all, the majority of them were thefts from unlocked vehicles. And that's something that a simple part of taking out your stuff and locking your doors would have reduced our crime rate even more and contributes to an overall safe neighborhood and a safe city. But our Part 1 crimes, those were very serious crimes, from homicide to larcenies to burglary to robbery, out of that, were down 18.28%. So we're very pleased. The focus on burglaries, we did a little analysis of those burglaries and since I've been here, I've talked about security systems and using those as insurance. We had 81 residential burglaries last year. Forty-four of the homes either did not have, which was a majority of the homes, or did not use their security systems at the time of the burglar. Thirty-seven homes with security systems were burglarded. And of the burglary alarm systems that were in place, 65% are actively monitored, which means the other remaining percent, people are getting web-based systems that they monitor. And many of us travel, many of us are in areas where our systems, we can't access the web or we're in meetings or things like that. And without someone actively monitoring those systems, we can't respond in a timely manner. The residential burglaries, we made 10 arrests and cleared 11 burglaries. We have two people that would be looking at substantial sentences for access of 20 years for their involvement in burglaries. But on the other side, the recent burglary that.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
We made, two of the arrests that we made.
Farther back, how many?
Ten arrests and we cleared 11 burglaries, which means.
What do you mean by cleared?
We made, those 10 arrests resulted in identifying those suspects related to 11 burglaries in, in the city.
So one was double.
One was double, yes. And that's not very uncommon.
No, 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 I just didn't understand when you say cleared, what does that mean? All the way through prosecution and sentencing, or you mean in the sense like they're no longer with detectives being investigated essentially?
We, we connected a suspect to two burglaries.
Chief, I think the question is what does the word cleared mean?
That's, yeah, what it means is we have been able to connect two suspects to a, or one, suspect.
At least one.
To burglaries. And through the process, by doing that, the, the crime is cleared. When we clear a, a crime, we clear it a variety of methods. We clear it by arrest, which in this situation, we can clear it other, which means that either the crime. We can clear it other, which means that either the crime didn't occur or there was something else that the suspect died, or one of those kinds of things. So those are the ways we clear crimes.
Thank you.
And then here is a five-year trend report. And if you look, our crime numbers in 2018, or rather, looking at them now, we're very much on par. We had 228 crimes in 2018 and 2014 we had 231. We had less burglaries in 2014, but we had more auto thefts and other crimes. So our numbers have reached the 2014 level, which I'm very happy about. And hopefully, we will continue a downward trend. That's our report. If anyone has any questions, I'm with you.
Questions, Councilmember Comisi?
Yes, I just want to have a clear understanding of the statistics with Part 1 crimes. I see on the back page, we had two auto thefts. But yet, under larceny, you mentioned unlocked vehicles. Do locked vehicles stay in that category of larceny?
No, a larceny is a theft. And when it deals with a vehicle, it is theft from a vehicle. Auto theft is the taking of a vehicle.
Okay. And so the 18.28 decrease is reflective of the back page, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Yudi?
Yeah, on the page 10 of the deck, calls for service went from 25,000 to 33,000.
Yes, sir.
Can you comment on that? That just seems huge.
It is huge and in one way, 2016, 2017, we reexamined the way we were looking at calls for service and counting those as trying to determine the work effort of the department. We were only counting those calls where people called the police or they called 911, going back to 2015. And we've seen a large increase. We count as calls for service, people coming to the desk, because oftentimes that is a time where an officer is taking out of the field. It is a time where we take criminal investigation reports. It is a time where we provide some kind of service to the community. It didn't count the number of times an officer initiated...
You're just counting differently?
We're counting differently, so that's exactly what it is. And it reflects a better understanding of the efforts of the police department and also the partnership with the community calling us, which is part of our objective in developing a better relationship with the community.
Makes sense, makes sense. And then priority one, response time?
Yes, sir.
Has been increasing from 2014. And it's what, like about three minutes now? What are your goals on response time and do you sound that way?
Well, the primary goal is to hire and retain police officers. We have five vacancies. And with five vacancies and more calls for service, it is taking us longer to get to every call. And the meeting time is just over three minutes. A call can take 10 minutes, a call can take 30 seconds. Or in some situations, there's no time because an officer just happens to be in front of a location or initiates the request. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Shepherd Ronby?
I'm going to congratulate you. And I hope you will relay my appreciation to your sworn and non-s sworn personnel for doing an outstanding job this year. I think it's incredible to have these statistics dropped as we are interested in data. And we're seeing this, essentially your work go up. The amount of time that your officers and your personnel are responding to community needs has increased dramatically. And yet, it's also been successful. And I'm so appreciative of this, and I know the community is as well. This is very impressive to have that kind of commitment and support and outstanding work done by your department. So though I wish to trumpet this, I know it's already been in the press, but I think it's very impressive and I hope you will come out to maybe some of those monthly meetings that we're doing in the community. I know you have a lot of ways, but really talk about the impressive and what still needs to be done. Because some of these are preventable, like locked car. And while we have better eyes maybe in the community from officers present as well as other members, I do think even these can get better. And I think it's a community effort to continue that trend. But this is so impressive, and my head is off to you. And I really appreciate that and I hope you'll relay it to your all of your team.
I will, thank you very much. And again, it's a teamwork effort of the community and the officers. And they all deserve it, great.
Yes, I want to thank the police department, so congratulations and great job. But I have a question regarding the five vacancies. Do we have any prospects as we see?
Well, we have one of our cadets who's now going through Los Angeles County Sheriff's Police Academy. And he will graduate, I believe, in June. He's doing very well so far. We have one other person who is going through backgrounds. He is a former New Mexico police officer. And we are working with post to make sure that his experience and certifications can transfer to California. And that way, it will reduce the likelihood of him having to go through an academy, which will save us money in time. We are recruiting. We have spoken to several other people that we hope will result in some kind of success. And we are also working with our interim HR director on some very specific plans to increase our opportunities. One other bonus is, one of my officers was recently hired to work off-duty as a SWAT advisor, team leader at Rio Hondo Police Academy. And having Officer Vespedge at that academy, he is able to identify potential candidates and talk to them and maybe even take them away from another agency.
Person on the inside, I like that.
I have another question. I was jogging a couple nights ago around 10 o'clock. And then I saw, I saw a police officer at a residential house hired to the fire department. I guess there was a 911 call.
Yes.
And my question is that if the police officer gets there first, does he or she engage in any action or just wait there until the fire department arrives? I mean, if the, if any, any person needs a CPR, where the officer start? Or you would just wait and see?
Our officers do respond with our fire department two locations. There are times when we have arrived fire two. Each officer is trained in first aid and CPR. They carry an AED, which is a defibrillator. And they have also worked on CPR on several different situations. They've responded and assisted at near drownings and at other scenes. We don't encourage our officers to enter a burning building. But if they want to help with crowd patrol, call out people. We do that. And, but they're another resource that helps reduce that golden hour or whatever the time is. But thank you very much. I'm not a medical professional, so... Seconds. But we do respond also, we have help.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for giving us your questions. Chief, I just have a quick question and another subsequent one. Currently, we don't require a commitment from the academy attendees in terms of minimum amount of time they need to serve with us, do we? That's not permissible, okay? And next question, maybe this, this may or may not be permissible, so I'll look at you first. I was going to ask exactly what you said about Officer Vespedge. Are we, do we encourage our officers who are feeling good about their service to really work at different maybe venues or whatever to try to recruit more officers?
Yes, we do. We have gone to community colleges. We have gone to hiring events. We are working on, part of our recruitment plan has a variety of ideas of incentives, other groups that we can go to and work with to find officers. But our interim HR director has been very helpful and we're looking forward to improving.
Let me go back to your question and not answer it quite so perfectly. If we're just hiring somebody and it has nothing to do with, no, I realize it probably isn't the full story that you should hear. This is not just relevant for police officers, for any employee. We can't require them to make a certain timely commitment to us. We can certainly ask, but there's really nothing to bind them to it. The way to make that possible is to incentivize certain stays with amounts of money. So for example, if we pay the hiring incentive, come aboard, we'll give you a grand total of whatever, $15,000, you get $5,000 upfront, you get the next $5,000 at the conclusion of your first year and the final $5,000, something like that. So if we wanted to get commitments, it is possible, but it has to be in agreement with something.
In view of the significant number of vacancies, it's something that I'd like us to perhaps learn more about as we get closer to the new budget. I think public safety is an important issue and we have that number of vacancies. We've already heard how difficult recruitment and retention is. And I certainly heard that firsthand when I went out with an officer about how people leave to go to other communities with better pay, so.
And there's several of you are concerned about that. Vice Mayor has expressed similar concerns. And I think after we take our recess and you come back for your final item, you will see that we have tried to propose some ideas to you to do some of this.
Perfect, thank you.
And my understanding is some of it is also subject to labor negotiations, which is not something that the council can discuss here. But I believe our support of the police and fire departments should be very strong this year. And I'm hoping that they understand that and it will be successful for everybody.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I appreciate your support, thank you.
One more question.
Sure.
So how can we encourage our residents to sign up for telephones with our security system? You know, like monitor?
One of the great ideas we have this year is the town meetings, town hall meetings on First Monday of every month here in the library at 6:00 PM. And the city manager and I have talked about dedicating one of those meetings to alarms and some systems and things like that. And also, we have a Coffee with the Cop February 8th at 8 o'clock at, it's on the Nixle message, it's the Little Cafe on Bishop. I can't remember the name of that.
The San Marino Cafe at the corner?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a hard name.
It's like the Golden Hour, what can I say? But we do talk about that all the time. And we're making plans to do something more formalized.
Can I also suggest that the Public Safety Commission is an excellent source? And I know there's a lot of people, can they also be a part of that town hall? Maybe it might give input as to what would be... Who's going to be careful of brown net tissues? Sorry. But other than, I don't mean from you, I mean from the public safety. So maybe the chair of the Public Safety Commission and vice chair might also be involved in that process of preparing and what to discuss and what, relaying information to the community. Because those are crucial positions that I think need to get, would be best served to have community in their action as well.
Absolutely, and they have been moving forward and it's been a great partnership. And I appreciate Chair Vog's presence today.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Vog as well.
Thank you. Okay, now next, we had a recess.
Maybe 10, just give us some time to set up.
First, you know, so the city manager will present a staff report and include introduction of staff's proposed items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had a nice long recess, about 13 minutes. It's time to shake off the regular meeting, we're going to do a totally different kind of item. This is essentially part of what would normally be a strategic planning process. Of course, strategic planning is not something that you want to close session about. That's an open topic, so we're combining it with our meeting today. But this is not a business item, however, in the way that we've been doing this morning. We're not looking for votes, there's no direction. I know, I know, we can do this together. This is, this is just an opportunity for you to expand your minds and think about what we want to be accomplishing for next year. So I want to take you through a little bit of a recap and then where we've been, where we're going and what we're doing here today. So this is part of our budget process. As you know, we are working on a new revamped budget process this year with the help of the executive team and your council subcommittee budget liaisons, Council Reunion, Council for Jacobowski. And we have developed a new process that we can get us a little bit closer to what it is that you were looking for last year. So this is the next step in that. So just to recap, where we were last month is, we had a conversation about operational plans that reflected the day-to-day work of each department. But the way to understand the workload of each department is a combination of their day-to-day workload plus the special projects that each department is working on in any particular given year. So there's no science to this. The term priority initiatives was used by the facilitator that we used last year to do our strategic planning, so we're carrying that terminology forward. Again, there's no science or magic to that term, we're just trying to keep things consistent. So having dealt with our day-to-day operational plans, we are now turning our attention to those special projects. And this is where we'll begin the process of getting direction from you on what to include in our budget proposals to you in a few months. So the question on the table today that we're beginning to have the discussion about is what are the special projects that staff should be devoting either staff resources or financial resources or both to for next year? Again, though we know decisions made today, this is just the beginning of a brainstorming process and a whittling down. We'll next be getting some input from the community about what they'd like to see on some of these things. So that's where we are today, is beginning that piece of the budget process. So what staff has done since we saw you last is we've taken stock of the organization. And again, we've taken stock of the organization, not the community. And tried to think about where we are for the good, where we are for maybe the not-so-good, where we could get a little bit better. And have kind of done our own assessment of the organization. Today, the purpose is for you to brainstorm on potential items that you'd like to see show up in the budget, as I mentioned earlier. Your budget subcommittee suggested that it would be very kind of staff to do some initial brainstorming for you and offer some things for your consideration. And so that's what you see up here right now. These are not done deals. Obviously, you have not voted on these at all, you've not weighed in on them at all. This is just your executive team's assessment of some things that might be useful and interesting going forward. Some of them are proposals that we think represent things that we've heard you say, that we think you'll be very excited about. Some of them are things that you have never said that we're very excited about. And we assume that some of these you'll support, some of them you won't support, that's totally fine. What you'll be doing today is adding your own items to them. So the only things that we will veto from your suggestions are things that are already there. So if there's anything that's already up there, we'll just say, we already have that, we have that under, you know, such and such. And so we won't put it up again because that will dilute the selection process later. Otherwise, this is true brainstorming, so I'm a little hesitant to say no idea is too crazy, but I will say it, that's what you say in a brainstorm session, no idea is too crazy. If these are things that you'd like to consider for next year, we'll go ahead and put those up there. We have also done an internal assessment of the priority initiatives that we were working on this fiscal year. And as a result of not a great process last year, we actually ended up with a quite unwieldy number, which was 39 priority initiatives total that we've been trying to accomplish this year. Based on our assessment sitting there at the end of January, we think that 30 of those will be complete by the end of the fiscal year, which is pretty magnificent, if I do say so myself. Which means that nine of the 39 will need to carry over next year in some way, shape or form. It doesn't mean that for those nine, no movement has happened. There might just be a few things that we need to finish up in the next year, but there are nine things that we need to carry over. That is not necessarily relevant for your discussion today. But when we come back in February, we'll give you a much more thorough analysis of what those things are that need to carry forward and what we think the capacity and faculty on the staff. So the items that we veto from you will be items that are either up here already or things that were already on this year's work plan that may or may not need to carry over next year. So again, just briefs. All right. So today, again, I realize I'm beating a dead horse and saying this repeatedly, but this is really brainstorming. So this is not, this is not a discussion you all will not be discussing, yes.
To get to here, you did do a SWAT analysis with your team.
Mm-hmm, we sure did.
Did you report on that?
The general review, it was really for internal use primarily. And it essentially, as I mentioned earlier, we did an assessment of the organization. We came out with some of the things that were our strengths, some concerns that we have about the organization moving forward, and some potential opportunities and threats that we see, we see coming down the pipe. You hit on some of the things earlier. We do have some concerns about staff retention as well. That was one of the things you talked about. At the same time, we actually feel like our current staff is one of our best resources. So we did a lot of work on this, we spent some time together. We did, we did take it into consideration when we came up with some of the information.
Can I get to some specifics rather than, or not?
I think that was not really the intention of today's meeting. But that would be a mayor's, a mayor's pleasure.
I also have a question for you. About what you just did.
Three minutes.
So let me just technically tell you what will happen today. What will happen today is I'm going to briefly just give you the lay of the land in terms of what we've already brainstormed for you, and then once that's done, the mayor will open it up and ask if the four of you have anything that you'd like to add to each of these, and we'll go ahead and put them up unless they're already up there. And once that's done, we're going to hand out the sticker dots that are not the same color that Councilmember Yudi has brought, and then we'll ask you to give us your thoughts on that. And at the end, we'll come back and I'll tell you, we have figured out a way to incorporate Councilmember Tal's input as well, since he wasn't able to be here today, so we will be able to get, excuse me, some of that input. I think the last thing that I would say before opening up to questions on process is that this is actually a really critical piece of the budget process. This is what begins the process of establishing our work plan for next year, and it is critical to have a work plan that both you and I agree to because it helps both of us. For your sake, if you know what the work plan is and you know what you've tasked me to get done, you can hold me very accountable because I know what I'm supposed to do, and if I don't get those things done, you have a right to expect some answers from me. On staff's side, it's helpful because we have set priorities, we know what your priorities are, those are the things that we focus our efforts on instead of having moving targets or things coming up periodically throughout the year. Now, of course, things do come out, come up throughout the year, and if big things come up that are the equivalent of these kinds of things, then what will happen is we'll simply come back to you and say, okay, if you want to put this onto the work plan, we need to adjust some of the workload off. It just gives us a starting place of dialogue and some straightforward agreement that we can all work with. So before I turn to an introduction of these, why don't I answer any questions or comments that you have about process?
Yes, Vice Mayor, actually, the question.
Right, mine's not really about process. My concern is that the priority initiative status update, you speak to nine of them continuing forward, and while I understand that the other 30 have, are projected to be completed, I don't want to quibble with completion, however, I'm concerned that some of these are, in my view, not completed, so I don't know whether then you want me to bring that up now, like the need for proactive code enforcement, our uninhabited residential property ordinance, and that whole issue, those to me are going to be multi-year efforts along with urban forestry, but I see that, and our sidewalks, I mean, I have people calling me about accidents from tripping and walking on Orlando like last weekend that required a cast. So I'm just saying, some of the ones that are completed, I understand we might have a plan to deal with some of these, so we'd achieve a plan, however, I'm concerned if we drop these off our priorities, that's really not... And they're still ongoing, I would like to see some of these be added to the continued list, and so I don't know if you want me to do that formally so we can support planning and building and code enforcement, we could support Michael Thron with the tree, there is one in, on one of these lists, but some of these I don't think have been achieved to the amount that I think the residents or maybe city council, I'll speak for myself, feel that they need to be to take them off and save them.
So there are three pieces to the answer to that. The first piece of the answer is, today is January 25th, and so the things that are marked to not need to be completed are things that we project to be completed in their form by June 30th. So we are basically halfway through the year, so at this point, I'm not comfortable moving anything off the completed list because there's still five more months to get some of this stuff done. If it does get to the point where they don't end up being finished, then that's a separate conversation, that's a dialogue that I would be having with the executive team because these are their responses of what they're committing to. So the first piece is timing. The second piece is, one of the other challenges that we had last year with all the priority initiatives was the semantics of the priority initiatives. They weren't phrased in ways that necessarily made it useful to think of them as a long-term project. So for example, there were several priority initiatives that were basically described as develop a plan to do X, Y, Z. Well, the developing of the plan is going to be done at the end of this fiscal year, so one of the things we're going to do to fix things this year is, once we know what those are going forward, we're going to frame them in a way, there's really an accurate framing of them. So some of the ones that you're looking at and seeing that they may not be, you may not think that they're going to be completed, it might be one of those, that the actual technical piece will be completed, but the follow-up may need to be a separate item. And then the third thing...
Right, but is the follow-up, like I'm not seeing sidewalks anywhere here, so do I bring up sidewalk?
So the third piece is directly on point with that. So some of the priority initiatives that we've spoken about before are things that get done once, and then they're gone, they're done, and they're gone. So those are things where if they're not going to be complete, you would need to carry them over. But a good portion of these things are really not things that get done and then go away, they're things that get launched and then move into the operational plan. And several of the things that are on here are those kinds of things. I would suggest the sidewalk is probably that, we're going to get an assessment of the sidewalk done this year, and then some of the work that goes on, it's not a priority initiative, it's not a special project, it gets folded into the work plan of the department. So I love that you read the document, thank you so much for reading all of that.
I've read it repeated times, as you know, multi-highlights, colored highlights.
So I really appreciate that, I mean, there really has been a lot of work getting done, there's a lot more work that's going to get done in the next five months, I think we're going to be able to get to a place where it will reflect the special projects, and I think you will find by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year that we've done what we needed to do to get to the place where we can move on in a way that you're comfortable with.
Okay, so just to, so I understand, so the things that, the four areas that I'm concerned about not being complete, or perhaps even not going into the normal workload, for example, the housing vacant homes is an ongoing issue, and that's on our to-be-completed list, let's call it that. However, I'm not sure that's that, even if however we phrased it is going to be completed by June, I think that that's an ongoing major issue for our community, so I don't want to put it in the second tier like normal operations of police department is that we're just going to go and look at homes, that's a big issue. And so should I add that tonight, or can I propose that that be a, one of now, therefore would be 10 items that would be continuing efforts or priorities that we're carrying over? How do you, I understand what you're saying about the plan.
You want to do whatever you want because you are the vice mayor. So let's use that as an example. So the vacant house ordinance, the reason that we're projecting that it will be concluded by the end of the fiscal year is because we're currently drafting a new ordinance that I think will be a little bit broader than the one that we have, that'll be in front of you within the next couple of months, and we will have put together the, I'll just call it a task force internally, of how we're going to be enforcing that ordinance, all of that will happen before the end of June 30th. The ongoing work is an operational plan issue, that just because something is a big critical issue doesn't make it a special project, it's just a part of the operational plan that's a heightened issue. So unless there's a special goal that's going to be accomplished in one year, it's not a priority initiative, just by semantics, it becomes part of the operational plan, that doesn't make it less important, it just makes it a different kind of function than a one-time big investment of resources.
Correct, okay, but...
So what I would say is, if you want to put it up there, you can. On those specific things, the ones that you've mentioned so far, the proactive code enforcement, obviously that becomes an ongoing issue permanently, the trouble that we're having at the moment is we haven't filled the vacancies yet, so that's a this year issue, I think that becomes an operational plan issue. The sidewalks are similar, the major special work that has to get done will be complete this fiscal year, and then that will be a big item, but will stay in the operating plan. The vacant houses, we just talked about, and I can't remember the fourth one, the trees. Yeah, and so there are pieces of that that actually are proposed to move forward in terms of the tree replacement program, we have some ideas up here, so my hope would be that of those four issues, you feel like we are adequately addressing them in the right categories in the right way.
Okay. Or if not, I could bring this up, after you have the town hall or whatever, we get an assessment along the way, this might be something, for example, the vacant homes, this might be something where I'd like to direct additional resources, and I don't want to strain, you know, our police department and our public works and add that, you know, enforcement, whatever we decide as a council after adopting the ordinance is going to be the, going forward with that new ordinance enforcement, then it's important to dedicate resources, at least in that first year, to really get an assessment done, and so I don't know, an enforcement program doesn't sound right, but that's my concern. If we just put it in normal, but they're already busy in normal times doing all the things we have now, I do think it needs a heightened at least another year to get that so that it's operational.
And so the final piece is, if in the end you feel like I'm not putting your mind inews enough, then put it up.
Okay, okay, thank you, I just wanted to bring that up.
Shall we proceed to the...
Any other questions?
Four.
Okay, so then just a quick intro to the work that we're actually going to do this morning. We have eight critical success factors, these are the eight critical success factors that you selected in our strategic planning session a year ago, and they're reflected in various areas around the room, so I'm just going to start this way and go counterclockwise for my own ease. So safe community was one, efficient responsive effective city services was another, attractive complementary business district is the third, fourth, fiscally responsible and transparent city government, inviting relevant city facilities, beautiful preserved, single-family residential neighborhoods, well, maintain infrastructure, and last but of course not least, engaged and connected residents. So these were your eight critical success factors. After we did our SWOT analysis, we thought about things that would help move the organization forward, and we thought about it in terms of these eight areas. Obviously, if there are programs that could be interesting, but they aren't related to our critical success factors, then why would we do it? So we focused in on these, and we've made some suggestions. You can see that there aren't the same number of items on different ones, so safe community, for example, has 11, whereas beautiful preserved, single-family residential neighborhoods has one. So part of the reason for that is last year, safe community had none, coming out of the strategic planning session, and most of our this year has been devoted to our residential neighborhoods. So there's a little bit of balancing that happened when we thought about what would we do next year. The last thing that I would point out is some of these have asterisks, if they have an asterisk, it just means it could have gone in another category also, and it just ended up in that category because it was. So like under safe community, it says implement one primary notification system for the community, that could go under safe community, or obviously that could go under engaged and connected residents, so it just happens to be there, so that's just our shorthand for that. So I would invite you to maybe take a minute or two, yes?
New question?
Sure.
Okay, so if we have additional items that we'd like to add, those dots are important, we want to collect dots, right? So how do we lobby for the justification of what we want, because on the surface, it may not look like much of anything, but I feel so strongly about one of them, how do I get to lobby?
So the sad answer is you don't necessarily get to lobby today at this stage of the process. The end game here is that you're not voting today on what moves forward, you're almost reverse voting just on kind of what doesn't go forward. So if we were to do that, then what we would really need to do is spend time on every single one of them, and if you'd like to do that, certainly we can, that will make this meeting significantly longer, but that's your choice. But for this to be kind of a fair, I'm pretty sure you're the one that has to be, so it's kind of, it has to be a fair process, so either kind of really all of the items get lobbied, or really none of the items should get lobbied. And if you think in the end, when we come back for our February meeting, that there was a gross carriage of justice, then...
Break my heart.
That's right, that is important, then we could theoretically come back to the table. The idea today, though, is that the way that your item goes up there is how it is, the four of you do your initial cut on the items, and then we actually come back and make real selections in February, and then the lobbying can commence.
Deal. I just have one thought, though, there is, and this doesn't have to be for today, but for your town hall, which will discuss these issues, I think it would be good to have the continuing priority initiatives on these lists. Because it does look odd, as you brought up, that our beautiful preserved, single-family residential neighborhoods, we do have the develop a long-term plan for medians, the tree replacement program, and the historical preservation survey, which are so crucial, those are continuing for a second year, so I do want to see those up there.
That's right.
Well, I even think it's up, if you're going to do the same, however you're going to publish it to the community, I would like to see the continuing things published as well, as part of that, or the first things in bold, these things are ongoing two-year commitments to get these things done, because I don't want people to go, well, what happened? That just fell off the radar and we're partway through, you know, so, thank you.
All right, so I would turn it back over to the mayor, we have some scribes here in the audience that are going to take your comments, and as he comes to each one of you, I know you've got some time to think about these items, or whatever you'd like us to add up here, let us know which category you're interested in, and then we can add up the items. So Dana, come on up, and Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back to you.
Okay, so, now I'm going to ask each council member.
You were, the team went through, you did your SWOT analysis, you brainstormed, you came up with these suggestions, should we take, really quick, but you know, why, what's the thought process behind this one, and why? Just really, really quick, and I know we've had some time, but is the next step for us just to throw our ideas up and you go see?
Yes, and really our...
That's going too quick for me.
Our goal is to be sure that all of the items that you put up here get the same treatment. So if you would like to do that, we can certainly do that, what I would say is, we would get your brainstorming items, and then we go through every one of them, and then Susan actually gets to do a little bit of her lobbying, we'll excite her. I'm totally open to that, but what I don't want to see is that either the items that staff put up or the items that council put up get treated differently before you guys do your voting. I'm seeing some head shaking from the vice mayor. So I think we can do this however you want, my interest is in making sure that all the items get treated the same, so if you would like to do a little pitch for each one, or even just a little explanation, we can do that, if you'd like to have none.
But that's what our voting is. I disagree, I think that there's a lot up here, I think we had this for a week now, and we've all read them, and I think that then there's a town hall meeting that will clarify it further, we're voting today, which will clarify it further, we're getting community input, we've had staff's expertise to come up with these, so I think I would like to see us move forward, and we will discuss it again at the, at our February meeting, and have the pleasure of delving into these with staff-specific, and then obviously, we're going to discuss these at the budget process, when we have to give money to support these. So we have so many discussions along the way, I think today it would be good, because there are so many, if we get our additional ideas up there and then get feedback from the community and staff and move this along, as opposed to spending time discussing each one of 40 before we've even started, that's, I worry about that a little bit.
Also, Yudi.
I just get concerned with the process, if the train leaves the station, we're not all on board, it gets up a lot of momentum, it might not take us...
We'll make sure that train comes.
I'll pick you up.
Okay, so I'm hearing the mayor say no lobbying and no discussion.
No, we're gonna...
Forty-five.
How many stickers do we get?
There's forty-five.
We will know how many stickers you get after we know how many items there are total.
How many are there?
So there's forty-five at the moment. If you added another forty-five, obviously that would change the number of votes that you get, so we won't know, we won't know how many sticker dots you get that are not green until we have the total.
Thank you.
So now, I'm going to ask them, you know, see if they want to add anything up here, but they can just add whatever they want?
Yeah, unless it's something that's already up here, and if there's something that I think is already up here, I'll tell you, but if you think that that isn't what you're saying, then you put up...
Do you have all those forty-five memorized? Anyway.
I will say, just to echo Susan's comment about wanting as many dots as possible, is if an item is already up there in some form, and you put up an item that is very similar but not exactly the same because you think it needs to be up there separately, just know that you risk vote dilution, so that, but that's your sticker dot strategy.
Okay, so I'm going to ask them, see if there is any items that they want to be added. Councilmembers, you can ask them.
Yes, please. It's going to be a mini lobbying, you know, it's not going to be posted that way. In view of the two trees that recently fell over in San Marino, and previously, a person at, I believe it was Witty or Narrows, killed by a fallen tree, and I believe a few years ago, somebody had a stoplight, Nervine, killed by a fallen city tree, I would like to add assessment of city trees for internal health and stability, and I'm fine with rewording that.
We've got that one.
So we have the stuff here as conduct a public inventory of our trees, do you want to add?
And an assessment of health of trees, that's on there as well.
Can you...
Sure.
Take my lounge jacket, I'm just going to... So the one that we have up here, under number one, is hiring urban foresters to assess the health of the trees and conduct a public inventory of our trees. Does that satisfy what you're looking for, or do you want us to add something?
Could you just add health and stability? Because what I'm looking for is, health is one thing if you want to prune or remove a tree, but I'm worried about natural disaster, if you will, to the tree, and then I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I want to ask another question to see if it's premature to add this. We know that right now, there's a lot of discussion going on with the unspent seven, 10 funds, and the proposal being offered to the city of San Marino. Would it be premature to add an in-depth study, or should we just leave that for the Public Safety Commission for their word? I just want to make sure that doesn't get ignored if it's timely.
Isn't that going to be done in a matter of like...
It is on there, pretty much their standing agenda right now.
I believe it's already under...
They're more good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Yudi?
I got two or three. And I, the first one is continue the professionalization of the management operations and the reporting. But is that covered with Invisio and what we're doing on the budgeting?
I think it is, but if you think there's something separate, we can put it up.
I also have create incentives for residents to plant Gretchen's favorite trees in their front yard.
Thank you. We call it heritage trees.
Would you put that here?
I would, yes.
So a tree incentive program?
Heritage tree.
Heritage, yes. You sure you...
No, I think, I think I'd get that better.
In the front yard.
Okay, she's going to get it in all caps, by the way.
The next one I see is covered here, which is a robust economic development program?
Yes.
With financial incentives?
Yes, we are hopeful for that as well.
I also have a priority, let's keep coyotes under control, probably over here.
So...
Coyote abatement program.
So we have been working on that already. We expect that there would be a plan already in place by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. If you think it's covered, then that's fine. And I think this is already in the budget, but I have massive actions on infrastructure improvements.
Massive actions.
Massive.
Here.
Massive actions.
Massive, massive actions.
All massive.
And then, and then I've got start to look for operational efficiencies.
So this is one that we have a lot of discussion on internally, about whether this should be a priority initiative or not. And you're welcome to put it up as a priority initiative. Our feeling about this is that we understand that this is kind of a continual mandate, and that we're supposed to be coming to you with those anyway.
And you know, and I'd use sub points to that. I go, look at combining fleet services with the school district. Look at combining public works and maintenance with the school district. So they don't have those redundant expenses as well.
Could that be, could that be this one? Explore partnership opportunities with other cities?
With other, I think he's saying, with the agency.
Agencies.
Agencies, right.
So not just cities, but agencies as well?
Again, I look at our fleet maintenance yard, and I look at the school district's fleet maintenance yard, and you and I are both paying for them, and that's crazy. We should combine and look for efficiencies.
So maybe that, okay, well, do we want to say, because opportunities and efficiencies are two kind of different things. Do you want efficiencies there?
I want cost savings for us in the school district.
So operations.
So it's a different category, he's requesting.
That's actually what we envisioned for that.
It's probably covered in there.
Oh, okay. Partnership opportunities?
We weren't, we were thinking sharing kinds of opportunities in order to save money, not let's partner with someone to spend a lot of money.
But when I saw this, did it say that didn't sound like it?
Oh, no. What we meant was things like the, that was the attempt, that was the attempt with fire. We've been having conversations with some other cities about other ways that we might be able to combine. So that, that is...
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Sure. Now, I will believe you that we have a, will have a sidewalks plan in place, but I would add sidewalks under our...
Infrastructure?
Infrastructure, that we need to fix them, and that's not a long-term, 10-year process, but I do think that should be stepped up, and we should devote resources. So I don't know how to break that.
So you mean, in this next fiscal year, we should put a special focus on sidewalks?
Correct. For the safety of our residents. I think that that is a big issue.
Great. So I guess I would put an asterisk by this one, too, because theoretically, that could go under safe community also.
Okay, and like I said, I don't know, I know that's operational. We do do it, but I would like to see whatever the assessment comes out, if there's a priority one list, that we get those done immediately. Is that the best way to think about it? I know that the Parks and Public Works does that, but I really want to make it a priority, because it's gotten quite bad. I would put the Rose Arbor on here, and I don't see it anywhere. So I would say...
Would you put that in neighborhoods or infrastructure?
Well, it goes with beautifully and preserved, although it's no longer there. So I guess we'll just call it infrastructure, since there's nothing left except for the footings to preserve. But I do want to call that out as a separate special project that we'd like to get done.
Yeah.
I mean, hopefully, we'll be in place, and that should be on there for special resources to be dedicated to. I also still want to put the, what'd you call, vacant houses, uninhabited property. I would like to set aside that as a focus.
What do you see as the special focus of the next?
If it takes additional resources from either the police or code enforcement working together, I don't even know, fire is probably involved to some extent. It's a public safety issue.
So Dana, why don't you write additional resources for vacant house enforcement?
Coordinance enforcement. Does that sound, and then in case it needs something that we don't foresee, but I really think that that's an ongoing commitment that we've made, I'd like to see it completed next year. So that was my thing. I consider calling continuing. I don't know how else to do it. I look to the professionals in the room. And also, I had a concern, I, meeting with the chiefs, and I would like to see some, particularly an enhanced police resources or positions to be put on there as well for safe. I know we've discussed some potential new positions.
Okay, put it under...
So not limiting to the canine, although I love the idea of getting a dog, but I know that there's a lot of costs involved with that, and I'm not sure that the council...
Staffing resources for police.
Department. And also to support our fire department, I'm wondering, it does talk here about a community fire academy, and I think that we, I had a discussion with the chief, and we talked about open house, and maybe a junior firefighter program or something like that. And I don't know if that should go on here as something, or is that...
I don't think it needs...
Needs a...
Yeah, it would be done within our existing resources.
Okay, thank you, chief. Those are, and besides, the support for a front yard heritage tree program, I think is the key, that, and I agree, making a financial incentive for people to do that and work with the city. Maybe, or maybe even give our discounting ability, if the city buys bulk rate trees through Mariposa or somebody, to make those available to our residents, so that they do plant. I'd be the first one to find a great tree. So I would like to amend that, or make sure it reflects that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Yudi?
Yeah, I think the city would benefit by having all the residents' email addresses, so we can communicate, do surveys, and all that. Now, is a robust email database part of engage number one, or should we put a focus on potentially getting everybody's emails, so we can do surveys and communicate and stuff? Or phone numbers to text or something?
It's probably embedded in several of them, including some of the ones that are over there. I don't know that you need a separate one just for that, but we have been talking about that. That's where the, yeah, that's where number 11 came from, one primary notification system for the community, because we have several, and they all have different databases. So we are taking that.
Thank you.
And can I just ask you one question? I'm sorry. Going back to a modernized recruitment process, I also spoke with the chiefs about recruiting for police and fire, and we talked about NeoGo. Is that what you were intending to include?
That's something that there is, the way the technology can improve the situation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I would like to see more camera installed, and how are those two or three doing there?
So...
Yeah, so I'd like to see more of these, so that's camera.
Okay, so that would be...
But that says...
So that's a different one. So number 13 becomes city street cam, additional city street cameras.
And second is, during my presentation, the rotary of this Denise Glass who brought up, that we should have a bigger program to prevent, you know, minor, finer drinking.
So let's put that under...
I think there is a wellness program.
Yeah, it is up there. Number nine up here, establish a wellness program for the community that could involve underage drinking awareness, bullying, suicide prevention, creating safe environments.
Okay, I did read it, but...
I know. It's a lot of stuff to get through.
And last but not the least is, you know, I would like to propose my 10% reduction. Again, I know, it's hard, you know, but I'm just trying, even if, you know, it comes down to 1%, you know, because I have a lot of residents, you know, complain to me that the budget continues to rise every year. So if we can put a stop to that, that would be great.
Can I verbalize on that for a minute?
Yes.
Because the reality here is...
Camera, not a camera, a microphone.
The reality is, we're going to bring in $30 million, and we're going to spend $30 million. In spending, it could be putting it in reserve, but we're going to allocate $30 million. So when I say increase efficiencies, I'm saying we just get more bang for the buck. We get more services out of that allocation of the resources. So I think on a 10% budget reduction, a different way to word it is a 15% service improvement.
But how do we measure that?
Well, we've been beating on this staff to get operating dashboards, so we know what they're doing, so that we can see for the same budget, we're getting more, more streets fixed, more trees planted, more whatever.
All for service by the police department.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, that's the magic of the dashboards, is so you know what our base level is. And we talked about that, about what percentage of your budget covers the day-to-day, what percentage of the staff and budget covers special projects, and with that same $30 million, just keep getting more and more out of it.
Yes, and also, if we can put a stop to the increase every single year, that would be great.
An increase of more money for the same services, which I agree with, but I think we want more services for the same money.
Yeah, I mean, I would be happy with that.
So how do you want to phrase this up here?
I'm just maybe no increase on the budget?
No increase.
No increase on the budget, okay.
No, more, more services for the same...
But I think they are lots, no increase.
Yeah, but...
I know what you're saying. Theoretically, you could put up a different item, or you could just not vote for it.
I mean, does the property tax increase every year?
Yes.
3% a year.
We always pay more. I do. I don't know about your bill.
But we also have to take into account that we are being reminded continually, CalPERS is on a 30-year upswing, and we are going to be getting significant increases annually. So I would not be surprised at all if our contribution rate goes up by a good $2 million in the coming year. What are we going to do? Give up $2 million of services to squeeze that into our budget? So I think we really need to stay big picture until we know exactly what's wrong.
But again, wait, just let me say, one more thing to close that loop. But again, that says to all of us how important the public safety tax is going to be for our public safety professionals to continue to provide the service we want. And council needs to get behind that, because if we're paying more, and we're assessed more for these costs that apply to all the cities, our services, which are increasingly in demand, are going to be negatively affected. And once that starts, if we're not all behind passing that and having the community support that, we will be in a very dire situation in the next two to three years.
Exactly.
And that public safety tax, in my mind, is really not a public safety tax. Public safety sells better, it's sexier. It's really, it's really a subsidy to the budget.
But no, it goes to public safety first, and pays those.
And that relieves financial pressure, that relieves financial pressure, so we can go fix more pottles. So I, so I look at it as a, as a subsidy, a general subsidy to the overall budget, and that public safety is sexier and it sells better.
But it goes to pay for them first, and it does.
Correct, correct.
So as long as it's paying for the same amount of officers and non-sworn personnel and supporting them, then we have to get behind it, because it's not an extra, it's going to be a necessity to continue the excellent work that they do and support them. And if we don't have a community behind them, then we're all going to be looking at a very different community in two to three years.
Yeah, and I think the public, I believe police and fire will always be supported, and the reduction of that 3.6 million would be more pottles, which would, you know, negative impact on the community, but I, I don't think that would, you know...
It's up to council perhaps, that beyond us. So without that public safety tax, we're leaving it up into a huge question mark as to how that priority is. But this guarantees that public safety is a first priority, and I think that's why we were all elected.
So Mr. Mayor, I could not love a conversation about the parcel tax more believed in. I'm excited. No, I'm excited that we're talking about it. However, for this particular item...
We didn't plan that.
Right, no, I know. So the issue here is, is, Mr. Mayor, whatever you want to frame your item as it goes up there, potentially you vote on it. Again, just to be clear, somebody could brainstorm, bring 100 elephants into the city, and you could all sticker dot it, and when we bring it back to you in February, we're going to tell you, we can't really do that. So if you, if you want to put up no increase, you want to put up 10% reduction, you can put up whatever you'd like, and our job is to bring you back information for next month about whether it's feasible, and if it is, how, what it would look like. So what you...
So you're going to have the 10% out of there?
You can do whatever you want. You are the mayor. So what do you want the item to read?
Is that, there should be no increase in budget, and then more services for the same dollar?
All right, we'll keep it that way. Okay, next, now, I'm going to offer a public comment. Does anyone, a member of the public wish to comment? Do I have any public members?
Same luck, so...
Anyone? Anyone? No? Okay, all right, then I'm going to close the public comment session. Now, the rest of the item discussion and action will be reserved for the city council only. Does anyone have any questions? No?
So give me a moment to consult with Amanda, and we'll get your sticker dots ready, and then give it to you, and then we'll talk about that.
Should we confiscate this sticker?
We're not using the same color, as remember Yudi had it wrong. And I appreciate that he showed it. So give us just one more.
He was using yesterday.
There are about 55 items up here, 53, something like that. We're going to give you 25 sticker dots. You may use them all. You do not have to use them all. You cannot sell them to your friend.
They're not transferable.
They're not transferable. There are no proxies.
Can we put multiple dots on this?
No.
Yeah, that's what I said.
So you may only put one dot for each one, and the reason for that is that it's our job to be satisfying the desire of the council as a whole, not projects that are individual council members that don't have support from the whole council.
Suggestion. Can we have, like, six to 10 green, and the rest all yellow, so you get a feel for where our, where our priorities are?
The challenge in this environment is unless three of you agree with something, it doesn't matter how strongly any one of you feels about an item. Staff does not have the option.
That will give you, that will give you more feedback if we are aligned, you know, strongly aligned on a few items.
Okay, so let's...
Like 10?
Okay, so let's do this.
But these are...
I just don't want my first vote to be perceived to have the same weight as my last vote.
Okay, so here's what we're going to do then. We're going to give you, we're going to give you your 25 dots, take the top layer, which is five of them, and put a star on them.
There's more than five on your top layer, though.
That doesn't count.
Oh, is it six? There's six.
Okay, then let's all pick the same amount, so six. Take six of your dots and put a star on them, and then that will serve the purpose that Catherine Eadie suggested, which is a great idea, to know kind of how strongly you feel. And it will also signal to each of you, how strongly each of you feels about this. So again, you don't have to use them all. You can use them all. Yeah.
I got a color where I can't put a star, dark blue.
It's the wrong...
If you have a shark...
It might show up. Black, blue.
Or what about, let him use his green. Use your green. Just tell him how many.
Is there a black?
We can take a lime.
Okay, when you are ready, wander yourselves around the room, and go forth and sticker dot. Okay. Okay, thank you all very much. Mayor Flapper, the next steps?
No, okay.
All right. So thank you all. I think all of you used all 25 of your sticker dots, so I'd be excited to go through and see what the consensus is, and what we should look for on. The next steps are as follows. As you know, unfortunately, Councilmember Cal was unable to be here today, but... but we will be able to go back and get his input on these. So he'll get a different sticker dot and we'll get his input. And then that will give me the ability to see where the consensus is and what we should move forward on. Once we know what projects are potentially moving forward and we'll try and follow up the list, we'll be compiling that list. And then staff is going to do two things with that list prior to seeing you again at the end of February. The first thing that we're gonna do, yes.
Is it two or more that are gonna go forward from here, dots?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Or are you targeting a specific number?
So it will depend. If I go through and in a perfect world, we would find the ones that have at least three of you supporting it and use all of those going forward, and the ones that don't have at least three of you supporting it, we're not moving forward. But it may not shake out of the way once we go back and look. So if, for example, somehow you end up with, well, you wouldn't end up with too many, because the worst-case scenario would be 25 would have support from all of you and that would be a fine ever to move ahead with. But if only, let's say, two of them had not made consensus from all of you, then we would dip down and do other votes. So I need to see the lay of the land as we get, and then we'll be able to figure out how to go forward and once we have the most consensus. Again, remember, you're not wedded to these, this is just an initial pairing down. So the first thing that staff is gonna do, once we know what we're moving forward with, is we're gonna work on action plans for each item that you're gonna potentially consider in February. Those action plans will include an assessment of the resources that'll be necessary, we think, initially to accomplish them. That could be staff resources, it could be financial resources. It'll have action steps in them about what really needs to happen. And we'll be able to present a package about each item. The second thing that we're gonna do with these is we're going to do a roadshow. So as you know, we're having our monthly town hall meetings, the first Monday of every month, here at 6:00 PM in the bathroom. And then we also try to do a second session later in the month at the Chinese Club, out or there available. And our intention will be to take the items that are moving forward, to invite the public to come out to that town hall meeting and do their own version of sticker dotting on the ones that they think are important to them. So then when we come back to you in February, we can tell you, all right, here's some more information about each item, what it will take to get them accomplished, and here's a general sense of the community's level of interest in each of these projects. We also will be doing an online survey, we try to capture people who are not able to make the in-person meetings and we're gonna get you as much feedback as we can. That's what we'll be doing with the ones that are moving forward. In addition to that, what we'll be doing for your February meeting is bringing you back a more thorough assessment of what staff capacity might look like in the next year. So that'll come off of the list of priority initiatives that we've been working on, how much staff capacity can you really fill next year? So for example, when you're making your decisions, you probably won't wanna pick 90% of them all housing in the same department, because from a capacity perspective, we just won't be able to do that. So the planning and building department is a perfect example. There were a lot of things done this year that have placed an added workload on that department. And so next year, as they start experiencing what it's like to work with those new ordinances and enforcement and so forth, may not be a good year to add a significant number of new items to that department. So those will be some of the considerations that we offer you at your February meeting. At that February meeting, that's when you'll be making your decisions. And I use the word decision in quote, because of course, you'll still have many other chances to eliminate them if you decide you don't wanna fund them. But when we leave the February meeting, we'll have generally your direction about what to include in our department budget proposals. So we have a month, we will take the show out to the community, we'll get more fleshed out information about each of these items that you have some consensus on and we'll bring it back to you for some more concrete decisions in February. I really appreciate your time. I know this is a very different kind of activity to do in a normal, formal council meeting where we're all in suits, but I appreciate you doing the brainstorming thing, getting with us. And I particularly wanna thank Councilwoman Jacobowski and Councilwoman Reedy for all their help going through this process with us and their support and ideas.
And I thank you and your staff for trying something new, because this is, we're in the life of business, this is getting the brainstorming done and the priorities and the focus, so I think we'll get a better result.
Well, don't tell anyone, but we're having a little bit of fun. Not a ton, just a little bit of fun. Thank you.
Anything else? No, then we're gonna close it out. Next, any recommended communications or public writing?
I think none other than what we discussed.
Any more to add, I see none?
None.
Next is a public comment?
Where is Jean?
Jean Rock.
I hope he's okay.
I know, that's what I'm thinking.
Jean Rock, public comment. Okay, next is adjournment. Then adjourn the meeting to Wednesday, February 13, at 16:00 AM. Thank you.